Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting. Tonight, we have some very special guests to start us off with the pledge of allegiance. We have Mrs. Rads Willis's first grade class. So if we could all rise and join them as they lead us in the pledge. Okay. I think I forgot to call the meeting to order, so we'll call it to order now. And... For roll call, I'd like to note that we have everybody here, and I'll apologize in advance. I lost my voice, so I'll try to make sure everybody can hear me tonight. I'd like to make an announcement. We did hold an executive session tonight before the meeting to discuss a federal litigation case. Moving into public comment, so I want to straighten us out here. I do have three requests for public comment tonight because we do have a group of elementary school kids waiting to participate in our meeting. I just want to be clear, if anybody has public comment on an agenda item before we go into the meeting tonight, we can make that now. If it's for a non-agenda item that's not on tonight's agenda, we'll save that for the second public comment section if we could. So does anybody have public comment? Either these three or anybody who hasn't given me a form regarding an agenda item for tonight? Okay, thank you. So we will get to these as soon as we're done with the regular business and our presentations from our elementary school students tonight. Okay, Mrs. Jones.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to Ringing Rocks this evening. Our families of first and second grade students, I thank you for bringing your children out so that they could help participate in our school board meeting this evening. I think it's a good learning opportunity for them, and we're happy that they could be here. Tonight, school board members, we are just going to share with you a little bit about our SWIBIS program. We did this a few years ago, but we've made some nice enhancements to it since then, and we've actually recently received state-level recognition, so we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that and participate in that banner presentation. SWIBIS, or School-Wide Positive Behavior, as you know, is our three-tiered system that we use to create a positive learning environment here at our school. We follow the Falcon Five, and our goal is to make sure that we're teaching appropriate behavior in a preventative way so that our students can succeed socially, emotionally, academically now and as they go into the rest of their life. So some of the things that we do at our school, we do multiple things as part of our SWIBIS program, but I'm going to invite Mr. Weber's class to come up here to the middle, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Weber, one of our second-grade teachers. And then we'll have our first graders come back up. And our second graders are going to come into the middle because they've actually added something quite special that we thought that the members of the board would enjoy seeing. Second graders, come this way.
What my class is going to perform is our school pledge, "Be Here and Be Ready." It's a pledge that all the students in our school make every day from the day they're in kindergarten in our school. And over the past few years, I've had my classes add movements to the pledge where we actually talked about what would be a good movement for these words or these words. So we actually came up with some movements to go along with our school pledge.
Maybe Mr. Weber's back row can turn and face our school board.
Thank you.
So families and school board members, as part of our morning routine, we say our school pledge each and every day to help us be here and be ready and prepare our minds for learning. At this time, I will just ask everyone to sit down, please, except for Jesse. Jesse's going to stay standing. First and second graders, please sit down. Thank you. And we're going to give Jesse our attention. Thank you, Chance. Sit down. And Chance is going to explain a little bit about our golden ticket system. But bef... Sorry, Chance. It's Chance's birthday, and he's joining us tonight. Sorry, Chance. Jesse's going to explain our golden ticket system. So Jesse?
For being here and listening and following all the rules. And being safe.
Board members, we are presenting you with a golden ticket. Go give one. Give him a golden ticket. Go ahead, go give him one. So golden tickets are a key part of the SWIBIS program. Students do earn golden tickets when they're caught doing something good, so we want to thank you for the good you do here for the Potsgrove School District. So tonight, you've earned your golden ticket. If you would like to come back on Friday morning to sing the school song with us over the announcements, you're welcome to do so. And at this time, I have Mrs. Rads Willis here. Mrs. Rads Willis leads our School-Wide Positive Behavior team here at Ringing Rocks, and so she's going to speak just for a moment about the award that our school just earned last spring, actually, like, the last day of school.
So last spring, or last fall, we were approached to apply for this recognition. And the requirements for this recognition are, A, we have state representatives from the school-wide system. They come out and they gather information through interviews with both staff and students. And they... We also are required to perform a benchmarks of quality, which that is an evaluation tool that allows us to determine the strengths and weaknesses of our school-wide program. And then from there, you're able to make the changes or improvements that are needed. And we were able to do that. And in order to be recognized through the state, you need an 80%, and we scored a 93%.
Girls, can you turn around and show the parents?
Also this year, Lisa and I both have been invited to speak at the state represent... to represent Ringing Rocks at the State Implementers Forum, which is in May.
Thank you, Mrs. Rads Willis. So board members, since you earned your golden ticket, what we do every Friday morning here at our school, if you earned a golden ticket in school during the school week, on Friday morning, your name is called over the announcements because you're a golden-ticket earner, and you're called to the office, and you help lead the school in the singing of our school song. So, boys and girls, please stand up. And this evening, we have accompanying us Dr. Ramage, and I think it's important to know that Dr. Ramage actually wrote our school song many years ago. And when we started singing it, and it just kind of became our little tradition. And again, Mr. Weber's class, they are bringing some moves with them that they are happy to share with you. So, boys and girls, first graders, you can face the audience. Stay nice and loud. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to share our SWIBIS program with you. Families, again, thank you. My families, we're going to take our students to the music room just for a brief little presentation for them, and you can pick them up there. So if you'd like to join me, join us in the music room, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Mrs. Jones, can I just say, Mrs. Jones, that every year, I really look forward to our board meeting at Ringing Rocks for two reasons. I think your PTA has some of the best bakers, and number two, your wonderful students in their presentations, so thank you.
At this time, I will make a motion for us to approve 5.1 and 5.2. That is the monthly board action minutes from the meetings held in September on 9/12 and 9/26. A motion and a second? Oh. Rich voted from back there. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented. Second. Yeah, you second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $6,364,245.40 for September 2017 as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I move that we approve the treasures report for September 2017 as presented and file it for audit.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Okay, good evening. We'd like to move forward with the report of the superintendent, and I'd like to pass the mic to our student board reps, if I can. Senior Mason McIntyre and Junior Savannah Lehr, if you would, please.
Tonight, I'm just going to cover what has been going on in the high school and the middle school. Two weeks ago, the high school celebrated its homecoming activities, and on Thursday night was the bonfire, which was always fun for everybody. And then on Friday was the homecoming game and the celebration of the homecoming court, so congratulations to all of those people. And Potsgrove won 49-6 against Pottstown in the game. Tomorrow, PSATs will be taken by the sophomores and any freshmen or juniors that signed up for it. The National Honor Society Blood Drive will be next week on the 19th. And the football team will be traveling to Phoenixville on Friday to try and continue their undefeated season. And in the middle school, the Student Government Dance will be held on Friday, October 27.
And then I'm going to take over for the elementary school part, and also a report out from, we'll call it a student forum here at Ringing Rocks, that we held, what was that, a week ago? About a week, week or two ago? So at West, they started their Healthy Snack Challenge last week, where students were encouraged to bring a healthy snack every day, and then they can earn tickets to be entered into a prize drawing each week. The second graders are finishing up their MAP testing this week. The Title I Math and Reading Groups are up and running, and the trunk-or-treat is coming up before we know it, and that will be held on October 28. And then for Lower, I just said that their trunk-or-treat will be held on October 22, weather permitting, but if not, then it will be held on the 29th. And then for Ringing Rocks, I just said talking with the second graders at Ringing Rocks was very helpful. The students were quite insightful, and they taught me a lot about what they do on a day-to-day basis, since I can't be there. It's easier, much easier for, like, the high school, because, I mean, you know, me and Savannah go there, so we know. But it's great to go and interview, you know, a bunch of second graders. That was fun. So we had four questions, 10 students, all second graders. So the first question was, what are some great things about Ringing Rocks? The students had brought up art class and the works that were displayed by the other students. They really enjoyed that. They enjoyed reading. Their teachers, nice people, Mrs. Jones herself. Math, I said, poor kids, because I'm not a math guy. Field day, and that there's, it's just a good environment with no bullying. That's what they said for that. Then they, the second question was, is there anything Ringing Rocks can do to improve the school or make it better? It was longer almost everything. Anything that they do on a day-to-day basis, they wanted it to be longer and just keep on doing it, whether that be recess, art, gym, encore programs, computer lunch, and several even said, and they mentioned this twice, so I mentioned, I'm going to mention it twice later on, that they wish that school could be longer because they enjoy it so much. Some students were interested in an encore program involving the sciences, and some students thought that it would be a good idea to, sorry, to have a water fountain outside. So then, what do you dream Ringing Rocks can become or can be? Oh, a school with better bus behavior, they said. Swimming with a swimming pool. No, not on the bus, but in the school. Bigger school, and not, they wanted a bigger school, but not for the reasons of more space, you know, newer stuff. They wanted a bigger school so that more kids could come and enjoy Ringing Rocks. That's what they said. They wanted more classes. Some said field hockey. Some said double recess. Seat belts on the buses were brought up. And these are second graders, by the way. They were just so insightful, and they just told us everything. Again, they reiterated about staying in school longer. They wanted a longer library. And then the final part was, what can you do to make Ringing Rocks a better place? So they said, dream big, help people, practice reading more, be nicer to each other, and become better at math. And that's Ringing Rocks.
Wow, that was really inspiring. If only we could just bottle up all that second-grade enthusiasm and carry it forward all the way through.
Savannah, I have a question for you. You mentioned the blood drive next week. Is that open to anybody, or is it only for, like, staff and students?
It was only for students mostly. Like, the students would come up to a table that the National Honor Society had set up at lunch, and they would sign their name into, like, a Google Doc to get their names on the list, and then they were given a permission slip to take home. So it was just for students. The first 50 students that signed up are the ones that get their permission slips in are the ones that will give their blood.
All right. Thank you both for your report. Just a question, is that, Mason and Savannah, is that something you plan to do throughout, same type of reports throughout the year for the rest of the buildings?
Yeah, so Dr. Ziegler, yes, Dr. Ziegler had made up a list of the different meetings that will, or, like, different meetings that we'll be doing throughout the course of the year, and most of them are scheduled to win, we do the visits at that school, and we'll be reporting out any time that we do a visit like that.
Great, makes sense. All right, thank you both again.
One more thing, real quick, Mason. I love that report, you guys. That was awesome. Mrs. Jones couldn't be in here, I don't think. If you haven't, maybe you could share the results with her, too.
Yeah, she, so she was in on our meeting, and me and Savannah both took notes, so she had a photocopyed them, so she has them, yeah.
Okay, moving on to action items for personnel. Combine all personnel. Okay, we have a motion and a second to combine all personnel. Does anyone have any comments or questions, 10.1 through 10.9? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to action items under business, 11.1. We recommend approval of an agreement with the Martin Luther School for two students in the amount of $45,900 each.
So moved? Did we get a so moved? Yeah. And a second? Okay. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
11.2, tuition contract agreement for Quireday Academy. We recommend approval of tuition agreement for one student in the amount of $180 per day for an approximate annual cost of $32,400.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We'd like the approval for a new student activity fund, the Student Organization of People United. We ask that you approve the creation of the new student activity fund for the Soup Club as presented.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Can we get a little description on what the Soup Club is?
Oh, yeah, it's an attachment. This, this, sure, sure. This group is organized to raise awareness for LGBTQ issues, and they want to establish an activity fund that will allow this group to raise funds to support their cause. You bet. Sorry, anyone else? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Two opposed, so the motion carries. Seven to two.
11.4, budget transfers. We ask the board to approve budget...
So we have a motion and a second to combine 11.4 and 11.5, both for budget transfers. Do we have any questions or comments on these?
Just a question. A year or two ago, I had requested that we get more detail on the checks, which we're getting, which is perfect, really. Wondering if we could, if it's not a lot of trouble. We get the accounting numbers, where they're coming from. Is it possible, without a lot of difficulty, to just add a column or two columns, I guess, to see where, what it's coming from and where it's going to? I'm not looking to take, you know, add time, but if it's a simple process, if not, I could look it up, I guess, but the codes don't help.
You want a description of the accounts as a...
Just the count, what account it is, yeah.
Okay.
If that's okay. If nobody disagrees.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to action items, number 12, education. Measures of Academic Progress Expansion to ninth and 10th grade. We ask the board to approve the purchase of measures of academic progress as submitted.
So we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments?
Two questions. Can we just get a reminder what the cost has been so far? I believe this cost is about $25,000, if I remember correctly, but, no, no. So I don't... I'm glad I asked for clarification. Okay. I opened this thing up early. I'll try to look at it real quick. But if we could get an idea, Dave, if you know offhand, what we've spent so far, or what the total would be, whatever is easier. And also, just a reminder, I don't, I don't know if... Okay. Can we just get a reminder of what this is for, for the community's sake?
Sure. The Measures of Academic Progress, what we're looking for is, you know, readiness in math and reading and in English skills, and we want... Last year, we committed to grades two through eight for this process to basically have an assessment program in place so that we could make accurate, you know, decisions, have the data, if you will, to make accurate decisions so that we could measure students' growth and also compare those students on a national basis, state and national basis, with other testing. MAP is a norm test that has, that ranges, you know, across the state, and it gives us an opportunity in our teachers to basically make real-time decisions on academic decisions for our students in K through eight. When we, when we did our data recognition period, our focus groups had to start... When we, when we, when we did our data recognition period, our focus groups at the start of the school year, we noticed that we had holes in ninth and 10th grade. Because a lot of students, they don't, they take, the 10th graders take the PSATs, and then they take the SATs, but we don't have the information that we need to basically carry them into their eighth grade to ninth grade year, and have those ninth grade teachers be able to chart their progress, if you will, and to be able to look at the growth that they've had in math and ELLA and reading. So what this allows us to do is to continually have an assessment program that allows us to follow the progress of our students from grades through the, two through 10. One of the things that we're saying, hanging on to a little bit, is that in the future, if the state ever decides what they're going to do regarding state testing, the word on the street is PSATs might be the baseline in 10th grade. So I can see us maybe, if that is the case, then we would then have the PSATs in 10th grade, which we currently have, but that would be the baseline, and that would be taken care of by the state as well as the SAT. So for us in the short term, we feel we can make the best decisions for our kids as they work their way into their, their, their high school career in grades 11 and 12, so we can place them best in career readiness, course selection, and allows our teachers to continue to monitor the progress and, and keep track. I really, I really think it's accountability for our students and their families, but it also gives the teachers a great tool to be able to come up with instructional design that best suits individual kids.
The concern I've had, I, I thought maybe I missed, was missing something. The current, concern I had initially with MAP testing and continue to have is, if we're using this as a test to compare it to national standards, as you mentioned, that seems to, to meet that need, right? If we're using it as a test to, I forget the exact term you, you kept using, but to make academic decisions, I think you were saying, in the classroom, that is a concern because these aren't questions that the, either the teachers are creating based on what, you know, what they know they presented in the last week, two weeks, month, whatever they're assessing, or directly from the curriculum resources that they're using. If they taught strictly to that resource, and that resource uses an assessment, great. You know, it's, it speaks specific to what they're looking for, and then they can decide accordingly, you know, make, like you're saying, make academic decisions. What needs to be re-taught, what needs extra help, what needs this, what needs that. So for $25,000, $26,000, I guess, for another standardized test to compare ourselves to other schools, I like the idea of comparing ourselves. I'm not interested in spending $26,000, and I know a lot of that's already been spent, that's not what we're looking for tonight, is my understanding, but I just think it would be money better spent in other areas, encouraging the teachers to, you know, and I don't, I'm not saying you're not doing this, but focus on teacher-created assessments to see, or curriculum-based assessments, to really see specifically, did they get that specific knowledge that I taught them, not that these, you know, norm questions.
I have a couple of comments. First, just to be clear, we discussed this addition to MAP at length in the Curriculum Committee, and the committee unanimously agreed that we were going to move this forward to the, to the whole board. The only thing we're voting on tonight is approximately $5,500 more dollars. Less than that. $2,200 less, because, because by adding the, the ninth and 10th grade, we got a discount on what we have already purchased through, through MAP. So, so we're, we're not talking about a huge additional spend, although to your point, we did previously commit to a larger spend for MAP. But, you know, I've had, I've had both the experience of my son's view of taking the MAP tests, as well as sitting through the curriculum meetings, and, and I think that, first of all, I, teacher-created assessments are, in my opinion, not a really good idea. It's, obviously, they do need to make assessments to get through their curriculum, but if you want to get a standardized score that actually has meaning across the building, then every teacher's going to do it differently. And, and if you try to unify it, it becomes a very complicated process. I know, because I'm married to a teacher, and, and the district that she's in has attempted to unify all their assessments, and it's not easy to do. It's a very time-consuming thing, and it's not a perfect thing. The, the thing that's good about MAP is that it's tailored to the specific student. They get a question wrong, then it moves backwards, and, and it, it moves in this interactive way to level a student, I think, more effectively than anything else I've heard of that's out there. And, and it's real-time, as opposed to all the other standardized tests, because we're doing it three times a year. So we can make decisions on it during the year that we don't have the opportunity to do when we take the PSSAs, or when we take the keystones. So, in my opinion, this is the best thing we've purchased in order to have a, a real-time impact on how our students do throughout the year, even if the assessments are not created by our teachers and are not specifically tailored to our curriculum. The fact is that they, that they've got to be aligned to the, to the standards we use, because everybody is using a, a version of the Common Core standards, like them or not. And so, it's not going to be hugely out of alignment for, per grade. The downside on all this is, is it's too new yet to say that, you know, this has been a stunning success for us. It's going to take some time for us to, to be able to evaluate the impact of MAP. But, and the other thing I like about it that I wanted to say to you, Bill, is, is the MAP test is very short. Unlike the PSSAs, which are, are like a two to three hour, pretty much use up the whole day, multiple days thing, the math MAP and the English MAP take 45 minutes each, so it's a total of an hour and a half, three times a year. It's not a big overwhelming thing, and the kids aren't stressed about it, at least not the ones that I've spoken with. So those are all my reasons why I'm a big proponent of this, and will be voting yes for this addition for the ninth and 10th graders.
And I have to say, I would be in complete agreement with you if it was this versus PSSA. I'd be all, I, I, you know, I'd be right there with you. As a standardized test, I think it does a great job for all the reasons you stated. But in regards to what we're looking for in regards to academic decisions, that's where I, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel either, like what you're saying, the whole school should, you know, to, to try to unify all the teachers. I, I don't think that's wise either, unless you're looking for some sort of standardized thing year to year, right? And I'm not suggesting we do that, try to unify tests for this part, but to use it as an academic or decision-maker to, you know, as far as, for the teachers, that's just, you know, so I don't disagree with you, I just disagree in regards to what we're using it for.
Just, just to clarify, make sure you understand, the way it works is that the teachers get, you know, this report that they can go in and see that this student's doing, excelling here, but here, a little bit weak, maybe we can go in and tweak it, and you know what? These other students in this class are doing the same, at the same level. I can work with them as a group now, as a teacher, knowing that this is a weak part for them. Where the PSATs are, here's your grade. And you have no, there's no reaction to it, you can't do it. So, I mean, that's why this allows them, I mean, the teacher feedback we have heard has been, they really appreciate it, so maybe that might be helpful for you if some of the teachers at some point came forth and, you know, explained why they find it so useful.
And you just reminded me also, another point I wanted to make is, another thing that is different about MAP is that it works at all levels, whereas naturally, when we get our PSSA results, the focus is on the students who fall below the line in order to try and help them get above the line, which is a very important activity that we have to do, as long as, for a variety of reasons. But, but the MAP, over time, will give us growth measurements at all levels. And, you know, we had a big controversy a few years ago in which our gifted kids, we were told weren't growing, weren't achieving a full year's worth of growth, and that was based on the PSSA scores. But, but the reality is that with MAP, we're going to be able to actually measure our students' growth across the board, and if our gifted kids are or are not growing, we're going to see that, and the same with everybody at all points in between. So I think that that's another big thing, that, that none of these other standardized tests give us, that over time is going to make a difference for us, and hopefully put us ahead of the curve.
Just to get back to Jim's question, as far as what my point is, if this was replacing PSSA, if we were given that option, like I was saying, I'd be all for it, for the reasons that you both described, and maybe more reasons, I'd be all for it. I'm against it, and, and, I'm against the investment we're making, have made, really, and make, continue to make in regards to using it as a tool for teachers to make academic decisions in what needs to be taught and re-taught. For example, like you were saying, it helps them see, okay, you know, we need to go back to this type thing, or, you know, you're strong over here, because the questions they're asking aren't, the questions a MAP test is asking isn't specific to what that teacher taught. The appropriate test to use for that, just in my own opinion, is either a teacher-created test based on whatever they taught during that unit or whatever, or if they stuck strictly to the curriculum, which would be fine, a curriculum-based, you know, test that, again, was specific to the questions. So if this was to replace PSSA, I, I totally agree with both of you, but for what we're looking for, for, I don't. But that's.
Any other questions, comments?
Annual cost, grades two through 10, over the next three years?
The, the quote is 20, just under $26,000.
$2,200 add-on?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to conference attendance. What's next for Apple Research Conference? We ask that the board approve of conference attendance for the item as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just one small question in regards to, not necessarily this conference, or maybe this conference in particular. I understand we always look to all the conferences and get something back and stuff like that, but it just seems like it's an excessive, $3,500 to send someone. Now, it even says in here, I believe, that we're going to have either Dr. Ramage or Dr. Ziegler, or both is going to be presenting at this particular conference. Well then, why would we be paying $3,500 if they're presenting? Don't, usually with a presenter, doesn't they have to, don't they get like some type of discount, or some type of payment for them to come?
Not, not in this case. Actually, these, these three gentlemen, you know, based on our, our Apple Research that we've done the past year, and be a distinguished program, these three gentlemen paid, paid their own way out there last, last year. I did not support that because I didn't know what it was going to bring back to us. So I did not support that coming to the board. They did that out of their own pocket to, 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 to get out there and to start this program. And what they brought back was this challenge-based learning that was brought to the academic committee, and it's another way for us to basically use, you know, use research and integrate technology into our classroom, and it gives us an opportunity to, to share at a national level, really put us on a national level with other schools. We went out there to observe other schools last year, and now it's our turn to come back and use our research study, which these three gentlemen will be presenting to the committee, the, the Curriculum Committee in November, to explain to you the different things that they've done in their research project, and what they're taking back to, to Apple in California. So, you know, for this time through, they have particular money in their, in their budgets to handle this. They wanted to spend their money that way, and I thought it's going to help us to continually integrate technology into the classroom, something that we want to, we have a big investment as it is right now, and I wanted to make sure that we continue with that and help our teachers get the most out of the technology we have in the district.
So when you say they spent their own money last year, literally right out of their pocket, or out of their own budget?
Out of their pocket.
Okay. I, I'm sort of with, I'm with Al here, where I hear you, I heard everything you said. But I'm sorry, with the amount of money that Apple makes, and the amount of money that Apple makes off of, of all the computers that they have in all the schools, and all the computers they sell because they have computers in the schools, this should be really on them. And obviously, you can't make that, that choice. But, you know, this is promoting their product. That's why Apple's here, because they're promoting their product. Personally, I would rather see PCs in the school, just because I, I see a lot of kids who go, I don't know how to do that, because that's, if you have a Mac, I can do it for you, but I can't do it for you if it's on a PC. And once they get out of school, you know, I'm sorry, I can't afford to buy my kids Macs when they go off to college. You know, they're going to be PC, so I just think this is a little much, and if they're presenting, it should be paid for by Apple and not by us.
Typically, when you go to a conference as a presenter, even if the, even if they do pay your conference fee, they don't pay your transportation and lodging. And so, my guess is that a lot, a good portion of the amount we're spending here is transportation and lodging. I'm not saying, I don't know whether the, the conference fee is being comped or not, or how much it is, but typically, the larger cost is getting there and staying there, not going. So, just keep that in mind.
Thank you. I would just, if, if we could just, Dr. Ramage, obviously, he's been part of this, this project since last December, and Dr. Ramage, maybe you can give the board a little bit more insight to what, what we're doing.
Well, I, I wouldn't just clarify exactly what Mr. Rabenowitz was, was stating. Because we're presenting, we're not paying any conference fees, I'm not aware of any fees that actually go to Apple. They're providing training for us, they're providing the resources that we're allowed to use. Through the what's next, is there a research project? We, we chose challenge-based for engagement as our choice, it wasn't necessarily something we had to do, but they presented us a year ago with several options and helped us design. They provide three different researchers who have not only supported us at the conference, but then throughout the year, we have them. We have them by phone, we can send information to them for analysis. Those are independent people from Boston University, Full Sail University, things like that. And up to $3,500 reflects, honestly, in part, just, once those hurricanes hit, flights began to really skyrocket in terms of pricing. So all, we're going to, we're going to share rooms, and we're going to take care of airfare and expenses to get to California. That's really the bulk of what that, what that fee is about. It's not paying Apple for the training and, and opportunities we'll receive. They are providing that for us because we're an Apple Distinguished Program.
Only comment I wanted to say last is that since, obviously, you've got your seal of approval and says that I'll definitely vote yes, the only thing I would ask is, I think in the past, we have discussed prior, I think, Bill, you're one of the ones that also brought it up in regards to sending so many people to a particular conference, as in, obviously, we have some presenters, but do we really need to send two, three, four different individuals when it's such an expensive type of conference? That's the only thing I'd like the board, you know, the school district to consider in the future, as in, if we're going to have a presenter, we have one or two, that's fine, but once you get to the third, now you're talking multiple rooms and multiple things. If we had two, we probably would have saved an extra $1,500 or so. It's just something I would think on big events, maybe limit the amount of people going, that's all.
Just something, the time of that, though, I've been to conferences where they were so large that even if you had two or three people, unless, you know, each one had to choose your own channel that you would go to while there, and then meet up and talk because you couldn't do it with one or two people, so that's just, that may be the, I have no idea if that's the case with this, but it is something to consider, so.
I'd just like to chime in and congratulate the guys, because I think this is a great opportunity. You know, they earned this, and, and I'm really excited for you for this, and hopefully you'll be able to come back and share the highlights, but I think it's, it's wonderful that you had this opportunity, I really do.
And I want to just say, I appreciate that you folks made the decision to share rooms in order to cut down on the costs, and hopefully you guys don't kill each other after a couple of days.
We promised to return.
Stay together.
Everybody bring your breathe-right strips. I, I just want to echo what Patty said. What a great honor and opportunity. I'm kind of jealous. I know it's going to be neat. I'm anxious to hear what you guys bring back and, and tell us that you learned and to see it start to get, you know, new things always being put in place to use the technology that we did make such a huge investment in. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, you know, again, I, I think it's time and money well spent in, in spreading it around the system. We can't be successful without principals who support what's going on, which Dr. Ziegler certainly does, and Tony does such an amazing job on the plumbing, as we would say, the, the infrastructure to make it happen. And obviously, I'm, I'm interested more than ever on how globally, as a system, we're using technology for learning, and that's really the, the focus of the whole event. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramich.
While I agree with Ashley's comment, PCs over Macs, in regards to this issue, Al, I was kind of discouraged by your comment that you're going to be voting yes simply because the administration requests it, but I'll be voting no because I'm against three people going, not for the conference itself, but in regards to sending three people. That's the only reason I'm voting no.
I just, I just want to, you know, I guess, one of the things that I've experienced throughout my career is when you have an opportunity to send your people and recognize yourself nationally, I, I, I think we need to do that. I think we need to be able to be known in the country at, you know, Cupertino, California, that Pots Grove has the, has Apple Distinguished Program, and we were selected to come out there and to, to, you know, give feedback on our research study, and then be able to share that with the next round of distinguished Apple schools that'll be coming in in December as well. So I, I don't want us, you know, I don't want us to ever, you know, think, I, I want us to be a first-class organizations, I want us to be a district of choice, and this is what districts of choice do. They sell themselves and they market themselves at the highest level possible. And like I said, I'll start sort of, I'll finish where I started, and that is, I, I did not support this financially. I wanted them to go and to prove that there was value in this for us. So they did that first, and when they came back and had the opportunity to share, not only with me, but with, with our teachers and with the curriculum committee last month about what this is going to look like as far as integrating technology into the classroom, I thought it's something that we want to continue to do and to use to our advantage, so we can then be a school that people come to, and we're looking at having people come to us now for areas of expertise and be able to, to market that. So I think it's a great honor. I hope we get the support because I think it's, it's well-deserved for us as a district, and again, it makes us a district of choice, and I think that that's something to be proud of. So I hope that we get the board's support on this.
And I do agree with selling ourselves. My only issue with it is I think we could sell ourselves with one person, flying one person to California, not three.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven-two.
We go to action items miscellaneous, PSBA officer elections, and I'm going to turn it down to Mrs. Cherico.
This should actually be a little bit easier than what it might look like on your agenda here, because we really only need to vote on the president-elect and vice president. The treasurer is running unopposed, the central-at-large representative, we don't vote for that because we are not in that region and, or at the western-at-large, we're not in either of those regions. So basically, we're down to the president-elect between David Hutchinson or Otto Voight III. So both of those individuals have been recommended, I guess you might say, by the Leadership Development Committee of the PSBA. They've determined that both of those individuals are highly qualified. So just looking for direction, if anyone has any feelings on either of those individuals.
Was the name of the first person?
Otto Voight, I think, was the one you were.
Otto Voight from Berks County.
Otto, yeah, okay. If I search for Otto, that should come right up. One would think. I meant to have this ready. Otto is in location?
Mullenburg, Berks County.
Right.
And David Hutchinson's from State College.
Right. I think that my choice was Otto. He seemed like he had a more extensive list of qualifications dating back further, and, and so for me, that was where I stood on, on it. I read everybody's biographies. These are never easy choices.
They're not.
Because you don't get to, you don't get to this point without being qualified.
Right.
So I tend to try and favor the person closest to us because I think that they'll more accurately represent southeastern Pennsylvania's interests as opposed to western Pennsylvania's interests, which often differ when it comes to state politics as well as educational matters in general. So where I had that distinction, that was where I made my choice, and like I said, I think Otto was the person that I was going to recommend to the rest of us. I don't know if anybody disagrees.
The only comment I had was, and simply to reiterate what Rick said, was I can't tell, because I know none of these individuals, looking at their bio, I have no clue. The only thing I looked at was that Otto was from Berks County up in Mullenburg, which is somewhat near our area, has a demographic that's similar to our school district, and then you have, my opinion was Wolfgang, who was from the York County area. To me, I'm looking towards those, as in they could represent better representation of our particular area and demographic of how we have versus some of the others, as I, as I don't know individually any of these individuals. So if anybody has a preference, it's fine. I was just looking at the ones that are nearest to us.
Maybe where you get this move, I apologize, is put a motion on the floor. If you have a, you can do that by slate if you also have a similar preference for.
If I could find the slate that I sent out, does anybody have?
Or do we, do we, do we need to make a motion to have the vote, or do we just need to?
I think you need to express your vote by a motion.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we cast our votes for Otto Voight and Eric Wolfgang from Mullenburg and from Eric Wolfgang from Berks County? So we have a motion in a second for, to cast our votes for Otto Voight and Eric Wolfgang.
Anybody have any comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. So we have four committee meeting minutes to approve or to accept tonight and none to report out on, so I'm just going to make a motion that we accept 14-1 through 14-4, which is the minutes for the Ops and Facilities Policy, Athletics and Co-curricular, and Curriculum Technology Student Affairs Committee meetings that took place. Thanks. Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Okay, we're on to new business. Does anybody have any new business at this time?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. The, at the football game last week against Upper Perk, which obviously you have, you know, experience with, our student section leader went over to Upper Perk's student section to just try to talk to them, and they threw a rock at him and it hit him in the face. So apparently, he came back with a, it got really close to his eye, he came back with a red mark and which then turned into a bruise. So I don't know if you would just want to sort of pass that along to somebody at Upper Perk. I wasn't there, I didn't see it, I didn't, you know, but I, no one deserves to have a rock thrown at them, so.
Mrs. Kutch, do you know if that was like reported to Mr. Drenzo or Dr. Ziegler?
I have no idea.
Or the football coach, or?
It was reported back to me.
Cheerleader coach or anybody?
It was just reported back to me because my daughter was there and she was in the student section.
Mason's advantage, hear anything? Along these lines?
Yeah, I was, I was there. I wasn't there with him when he'd, when it happened, but he went over with, like, it was, there was only like 12 students from Pots Grove at that game, and most of them went over.
Can I interrupt for a second? If this, it sounds like might involve specific students, maybe we can have an offline discussion?
No, there won't be any names.
Just, just to.
Okay.
Why don't you just look into it, Bill?
Yeah, I was just curi- I was just curious to see if either, obviously, our student leaders, I just want to know if, maybe they were there, you were, so we can have that discussion and I can follow up with our administration as well as Upper Perk's administration. So, thank you.
And if I could just piggyback on that real quick, to everybody out there, if you hear anything, immediately get ahold of the administration. If you hear of anything that's causing harm to our students, home or away, because here we are, we're like, how many days away? Like, that's, you know, now, now they're just finding out. So if you ever hear anything, go directly to the source, they're here to help you.
I just wanted to put a little plug out there for upcoming Friday's football match is going to be against Pope John Paul. It's going to be a very big match. I think we're both still undefeated. Obviously, this match could be deciding as in placement, obviously, for playoffs and such, so we want to have everybody there as possible. The other shout-out I'm going to put out is it's also Pinkout Night, as in what we're going to be celebrating, our Pinkout Night and our Senior Night. If you go on your Pots Grove Boosters page, which is through your athletic page, you can get your Pinkout T-shirts. All proceeds go to our local Phoenixville Cancer Center. So everything that's sold for those shirts stays here locally at our Phoenixville. So if anybody wants to get those shirts, they're online, and I just want to make sure we get everybody out there for the game. It's October 20th, Friday night, obviously, here.
Do you have to say this Friday? Is it next?
Next Friday, next Friday, October 20th, Friday, October 20th.
Just one thing I'd like to add to that, the Phoenixville, who, I'm eight years cancer-free this month, which is a big milestone, but that fund actually is for patients only. It is not for research, it is for whether they need gas to go back and forth to treatment, whether they need groceries, if they have medications, a lot of medications, they cannot afford, the side effects medications. So I can guarantee that money, I try not to get too emotional about it, but we take the soccer team, we actually have our friends helping friends, it'll be the, the seventh year that the soccer team, we'll have it this Saturday. We combine all the funds together, we go down to the, to the cancer center, we get a tour, we get to see the people that it helps, and we, the kids get an explanation, and it's just a beautiful thing. So I just want everybody to know, it's such a beautiful thing because it goes directly to the patients who need it now, not researched, it's, you know, but, and I thank you so much for the Booster Club, for what you do for them.
I have one thing in regards to the facilities policy that was most recently approved, but now that we've decided to go back and review it. Because of that, I'm going to recommend and, and make a motion in a minute, that we temporarily suspend the current policy until it can be reviewed, and in meantime, go back to the original policy. If that doesn't cause too much logistical nightmare, I looked at Dave and Bill for that. And then, when the policy committee reviews the, the current facilities policy, to whatever we come up with, not implement it until the following school year to give the groups enough time. So with that said, go ahead.
If you're, can't stop you from making a motion, but if you're going to make a motion, I just ask, I want to remind that a lot more went into that policy than just the use of facilities fees that are causing the trouble. So my request would be if you're going to make a motion, that we just make a motion to suspend the fees, not the policy. Okay?
Will it be any fees in the interim?
Well, then, we can leave to that before, I would say, make the motion, and then have the discussion, and we can go to these.
When, did you, you haven't made the motion yet, so we can still talk about it, right?
Well, at least make the motion and then talk about it.
Well, or before. I, as, as we've discussed previously, I'm troubled about, about the way, some of the aspects of how this policy has been implemented, and we may even hear from somebody when we open up public comment. You know, we've had discussions with some of the PTAs, with the Girl Scouts, and, and I don't want to char, I, I think we, I think we need to be cognizant of the issues, but to undo all the work related to the policy also feels wrong. I mean, I liked that we were going to send it back to committee and, and refine what was done so that, so that it works for everybody in the district, and also looks out for the district's interests, which are important as well. I'm pretty torn about, about voting on a motion right now, Bill. You know, of course, you, if you make it, I will, but, but it's a, I, I don't feel like I have enough information to make a good decision, which is something that I hear you say sometimes, and that's the way I feel right now about this.
And that's a good point. My concern, and maybe there's a better way to go about doing it, my concern is because the implementation wasn't what any of us, I think, is safe to say, expected, there's groups being negatively affected, which I hate to, you know, we do, I agree with what you're saying, we need to take time and make sure we do it right, you know? Is there a way to allow these groups to use the facilities that were using them prior? With, I don't want to be changing things that we like, but, you know, just until we can, I don't even know how I'm going to vote on the policy itself, but since we're re-looking at it, you know, I'm just thinking, can we go back to what it was prior, keep that for the year, you know, change our policy implemented in the fall to give the groups enough time? So if that's a matter of just saying, hey, waive the fees for now, I, I don't know, I'm open to whatever, I just want to give some relief to the groups that are negatively affected.
Not sure exactly, you know, obviously, I don't get the community input that you do, so I'm not quite sure I understand exactly what the issue, obviously, there's a backstory to this, and you do as you, as you wish, but I don't think you want to totally suspend the fees. I presume you still want some fees while you revisit the fee schedule, you know, I, again, I don't have the backstory, but to suspend fees means that for some period of time, we're going to absorb a fairly significant cost where you had a fee schedule and maybe you want to go back to that, I don't, I'm quite sure.
And that's what I'm saying, to go back to what was.
How about just making a motion to suspend the fees for the Girl Scouts for now, and then deal with other issues on a, on a case-by-case basis until we finish redoing the policy?
And I don't know if we need a motion or not, but I think we just, I mean, my-
I would be more comfortable if you had a pre-existing fee schedule, to go back to that. I'm, Rick, I'm a little uncomfortable sorting out one entity, because that gives me, you can imagine, some angst for a whole lot of legal reasons.
That's why we hire you. But, but in this case, we, we sort of inadvertently, from the public comment that we had at the last meeting and from follow-up communications, we pulled the rug out from under a very important program to the Pots Grove School District that's largely made up of Pots Grove students, and by the way, that also does a lot of community service for us that, that could be- be...
Is there a category, again, I don't have the back, is there a category that's being affected, a subcategory that may only be this group but maybe others?
Well, you know, I don't know. I don't know. I just know that, that we've got a problem. We've got a group that hasn't been able to meet that, that does service to us that we don't compute and imputed value to, but there is a value to. So, you know, me, I just want to address it. You know, I, I don't know how to address it. I don't need a motion to address it, I just want it addressed.
Dave, do they come, I mean, can you help me here in terms of what part of the umbrella they come under?
First off, I guess, in either our pre-existing policy or the current policy, we granted certain preferences to nonprofit community groups serving the Pots Grove School District. So, there are, there are different fee structures related to that. With respect to the, the Girl Scouts not being able to meet, I did have a conversation with the representative following our last board meeting, invited them in, told them we'd figure out how or if there was going to be any fees as we went forward, but invited them in and asked them to come, we sent out all the approvals for all the requests. I didn't check and see if they're actually coming. I apologize for that. We'll, we'll do the board's will, but there are groups that have paid, there are groups that haven't paid, there, so there'll be, if we waive the fee, I think we have to waive it uniformly across the board, and I'll be cutting refund checks for those who have contrib, who have voluntarily complied with the, the fee structure. Or we can review the fee structure and we can adjust fees later based on whatever changes we decide, we deem are appropriate in the fee, fee scale. I think we can do either, I just...
I'm in favor, I mean, it's me, I'm in favor of the second, but I, I'm very concerned with any organization, especially organizations that serve our children, being restricted from using the facilities in the meantime. So, we know from the conversation we had in the last meeting that there are organizations who operate as a nonprofit and they have to have a zero budget at the end of their fiscal year, and, and so they need time to plan. They need help to understand what in-kind contributions mean and the like, so that they can have this opportunity to plan to meet those requirements. In the meantime, they can't, we can't not allow them, I don't know how to say this right. We can't prohibit them, we don't want to prohibit them, from holding their meetings or their functions in our facility where they've relied on us to be able to do that for so many years at no cost. I think, I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of different groups and most of them are fairly understanding of the, that we have to make this progress and that there's, that there's going to be fees attached at some point, and, and they're, they're fairly low, but they, they need to have the opportunity to plan and understand, and, I mean, I, I sat through these...
How about we do this, how about we, that we give the administration directive that folks that indicate nonprofits, that this is a hardship, that we will not collect the fees currently until we sort this out going forward, and that we will, they need to understand that there will be a fee, and that anybody that's negatively affected the other way with the understanding will ultimately issue a credit. I, Dave, I don't, you know, I'm on your side, I'm not the business manager, but I don't think we want to be cutting and calculating checks, but as we work it out, we'll give a credit going forward because we have to be fair to everybody, all the nonprofits. But so, right now, if, if there's a hardship for somebody, we'll work with them, and I would request respectfully that, I guess this is the policy committee that is jurisdiction, that I can, you know, I can't make you come out, but I urge you to sort of deal with this as soon as possible, hopefully, schedule a special meeting with this as the only agenda item, let's try to get this resolved. Before we compound our problem of credits and other people coming forward, let's try to clean it up as soon as possible. In the meantime, we can let the Girl Scouts meet.
Second?
Do we need a motion?
That was my question, is if we can give that directive, which I thought we did at the last meeting, if we could just make it clear this time that we don't want to, we don't want to prevent any organizations that were previously using, especially the, the not-for-profits that are serving the kids, from having their meetings until we can get it sorted.
Mr. Oxender, what I'll do is, I'll, I'll work with, with Mr. Nestor and Mr. Drenzo to make sure that that, that gets all sorted through until it gets worked out in policy committee.
Mark, since that's going against a policy, do we need a motion and a vote or no?
My view is, we're not, we're not going against the policy, we're simply acknowledging the hardship until we can work with them on payment. It would be a little bit, I, I guess, an example would be that, you know, I'm sure it happens, some youngster comes in and doesn't have their lunch money, you know, we'd have to come in later in the week and pay it.
I knew we were going to talk about it. Thank you for bringing it up.
Yep. And...
You say there's also some public comment? Me. Is that it for new business? Okay, so, we're going to move on to answers to previous inquiries and then public comment, I promise. We just had one previous inquiry that we need to cover.
Yeah, I just want to ask the board, obviously, you had an opportunity to, the question was regarding KI and potassium iodide, was brought up by Mr. Parker, and I had an opportunity to research that a little bit. We had a chance to work with the Limerick Emergency Management Committee in preparation for our drill in November, and got some, some of their thoughts and expertise, as well as our own school nurses and the school nurses from other districts. So, I just, that's the information that I have for you and the reasons at this point that we're, why we're not recommending that particular piece at this time. So, if there's any, any more questions, I can look into them for you, be happy to do that, but I think that, you know, an, an issue like Limerick that does occur, it's a very slow, our drill might be two to four hours long, but if anything would escalate to a point of any type of radioactive leak, it could take days and weeks, and we would all be out of the area by the time that, that ever, that ever occurred. And that was pretty much the message that was brought, brought by our emergency management specialists that came, came to visit. So, I share that with you as just, just more information.
Okay, moving on to public comment, thank you, Dr. Shirk, for that update, by the way. I'm sorry, my voice is failing. Okay, first, we have Shelley Stockenall from the Girl Scouts Manitani Service Unit.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Man, thanks.
Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So, thank you so much for having us. I'm here to find solutions, I'm not here to place blame. Personally, I was never welcome to come in, that's all I've been asking for, for over six weeks, is to have some sort of meeting on the value of what we bring to Pots Grove. You said you want to be the, you know, school district of choice. We had Girl Scouts in here tonight performing. You said that they want to have, you know, more, 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 right? And this is what we provide them as a Girl Scout organization, we are the premier leadership, girls, girls' leadership in the world, right? So, by the time they hit high school, they've got business acumen, they're developing leadership skills, it's a staged program to grow them. Every female astronaut that has been to space has been a Girl Scout, more than 50% of our government governors, you know, US representatives, senators, women have been Girl Scouts. This is a very well-known, statistically-driven program that we're involved in, and we're volunteers. And I actually brought a Girl Scout with me today. If you could stand up, this is Macy Long, she is a 12th grader at Pots Grove. She recently got her gold award. And this is the part that I'm really not understanding, is that when a girl gets her gold award, she has to go through a very rigorous process that is approved by the Girl Scout Council. She has to come up with a business plan, a budget, she needs to be able to do these things, she needs to run a program, which she did at West Pots Grove. She gave over 80 hours of her time, she ran a team of more than five other people. It was a STEM program, which apparently, some people in the school district are applying for a grant now to be able to continue, which is wonderful. She does all of this, and what happens is, is that people in academia, they understand the value of this, right? So, she has colleges salivating, she wants to go to school for biochemical engineering. She has people, colleges salivating for her to apply there. And Girl Scouts who get their gold award, it's very similar to the Eagle Award in Boy Scouts, a lot of people are familiar with that. So, they get lots of scholarships, but in addition to scholarships, I have a friend who has her gold award, she went to Brown University, it's an Ivy League school, and she said to the administration, the registration director, how much did that matter, that I had my gold award? And the, the person at Brown said, well, we will take people who have lower SAT scores that have their gold award than over people who have higher SAT scores. And the reason why is because, and it's a statistical fact, they make better alumni and they're more likely to finish college because they've proven themselves. So, if Brown wants girls who have their gold award, Penn State does the same thing, I talked to the, the register over there, he said they put Eagle Scouts and gold award applications, when they have those on their college applications, he puts them in a separate pile. The military, if you have your gold award or you have your Eagle Scout award, you go in a, a rank ahead of anybody else who is enlisting. So, I'm really, I understand that maybe not everybody understands those things, and I'm hoping that maybe we can look at Scouts in a different way at Pots Grove, and we should be encouraging these students to stay in Scouts, to earn these awards, to do these things, and that Scouts is not penalized because we meet in the building. I've been meeting at the music room over at West Pots Grove for years, I appreciate that, I've been meeting for free, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. We're there when Toni, the janitor, is there, we don't leave a mess for her, she's there anyway, we're not asking for extra lighting or heat or anything, they're there. We have a very great relationship with everybody over at West Pots Grove, and because we, we really care, you know, we've provided a program, another girl in my troop provided a program that Mrs. Kohler had requested to help incoming kindergarten students prep for kindergarten, not academically, but day structure stuff, right? So, it's very specific things that we've done to give back, and it just, it really is shocking to me that I've been requesting this meeting for six weeks just to have this opportunity, and I thank you for listening to me tonight, to discuss what the value is in scouting and how this, this cost is such a hardship for these girls to be able to, and especially as girls get older. You know, the Daisy and Brownie troops, when they're young are big, I've got six girls in my troop, all six of them are going to get their gold award, they're amazing, amazing young women, but for them to be able to split the $150 with all the other programs and activities and these projects cost money too, to, to be able to run, it is a hardship. So, as you go back, and I appreciate you, you know, trying to, to get a, a grace period on, on the policy, and I understand your point of not, you know, being able to do that and that a lot went into the policy, but I'm just hoping that going forward, when you rewrite the policy, that you do consider the value that scouting brings to Pots Grove.
Well, I also wanted to say that I also made the point that I don't, that I want you folks to be able to meet and, and that I do see the value in the Scouts, and regret that we made decisions that caused hardship for, for your organization, for all the reasons that, that you said so eloquently just now. So, my, I think we already agreed that, that...
Well, did, did you agree though, that we could meet for a time period, but at some point, a fee is going to be assessed?
We're, we're going to revisit the policy. You know, the, the policy still stands for now. I can tell you that, that in my personal opinion, the service that you folks do for our school districts, such as the ones that you laid out, have value. I, I don't know how we're going to compute that value, but, but my hope is that even if we didn't change the policy as it exists now, that the value would negate whatever costs might occur. I can't say that with certainty, I can't write the policy as I'm talking to you here today, I could just give you that my personal opinion is that it should be that way. I'm one of the three people on the policy committee, but not the only one.
I would like to, I would like...
I, you know, what I've heard here tonight, and I appreciate your passion, and I can't walk in your shoes, but we have to treat everybody equally. Right now, for the moment, you've gotten what you need, we're not going to collect the fees from you. Let me finish, please. But you need to understand that we don't want to make a knee-jerk decision till we study it because we have to treat everyone fairly. And unfortunately, we're not in a position, or should we be in a position, to judge who uses more light or less light, or who may put a grade and burden on the building. You know, the policy has to be applied uniformly, we can make categories such as nonprofits, we can favor groups, in my opinion, that are community-based and are majority of our students. And I think if you just give the board a little bit of time, they're going to try to ameliorate this issue. I mean, you just have to give them a chance because apparently there was an inadvertent policy written that may have had an inadvertent consequence, I don't know, but that's what I'm hearing. So, just give us a little bit of time to try to straighten it out.
Thank you, sir. I'm not sure if you were at the last meeting? When I spoke and asked for, and asked for the meeting?
And I don't watch the meetings on TV.
I, that's fine. But I just want to put out there that I did have a conversation, but we still requested a meeting. And when I was sitting here, as most of you saw who were facing me, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Girl Scout law, but we're all about honesty and fair, which I know you guys are also because I heard what Ring and Rocks performed earlier, who I am so proud to say my Girl Scouts were in there because I love them very much. However, what I heard tonight coming out of her mouth was not honest and fair. And I am a Pots Grove alumni, and I feel like we are being treated horribly, and this is not why I would want, how I would want Pots Grove to display. And I'm sorry, I am so emotional, please don't take that...
Let me suggest to you that, that we try to move forward, that Dr. Shirk will be glad to take your name, and you're welcome to attend the policy committee meeting when they address this.
That, that is my question. When is that? And my question is...
We're going to set a meeting?
And when can we meet with a policy, not just with more, with a panel and not just one person?
Policy committee is just the three people, and you'll meet with those folks, they open it up to the public, it's not dissimilar to what's happening here, but there are certain things that we address in a committee forum because frankly, there's a lot of folks, when we get to this level, that may not have an interest in an issue that doesn't affect them. So, we try to deal with these issues in committee. You know, I don't know what you've taken umbrage with, and I don't choose to debate that. I ask you, let's go forward and we'll deal with it at the policy committee.
So, our policy committee meeting, there, first, the regular policy committee meetings are, the dates are posted on the, on the website, and we have one once a month. This one, it looks like we're, we're leaning towards a special meeting where we only address this issue, and we could make you, well, we'll make a public announcement, but I will make sure, because I have your contact information, that you're made aware, just so you know that these committee meetings are a lot more interactive, we don't have, you know, you get your five minutes of public comment, they're, they're, they're made to be a smaller group so that they can be more interactive and we can peel back more layers when we need to. So, I'll make sure that you're aware when that meeting's going to happen so that you can ask all the questions you need to.
I appreciate that very much.
And, and we do take, I mean, the, the policy committee, we messed up, right? We, we rolled it out in a, a way, you know, we didn't get, we didn't get, we didn't consider the fact that you need fair warning and to let people know that these things are coming. We thought a lot about the policy, I think it was in committee for a year almost, and there were things we didn't think of. We'll appreciate you, having you and anybody else there to, to remind us of the things that we're not thinking of when we, when we take another look. So, I promise that you'll be invited.
I appreciate that very much.
I appreciate that very much.
And just one last thing before you go. Before you leave, Mrs. Bicker, my, my secretary's behind you there. If you could just give her your name and, and address and contact numbers for me, that, that'll help me moving forward as well. Thank you.
I really, really appreciate everybody's time and consideration. I hope that that comes through. And, you know, I know it's uncomfortable situation, but like, I really appreciate you going back and reconsidering for us. It really means a lot to me. Thank you.
Okay, I have Melissa Haines.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure, I know many of you on the Facebook page for the district. I'm the one who started, if any parents are here, for my comments. Thank you. There have been a number of issues on the bus. Specifically, my son's bus, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Pleasantview Road. We live at the corner of Pleasantview and Santatoga. Yesterday, the sub dropped them off at the top of the hill of the S curve instead of turning onto Santatoga Road. I walked a third grader home that lives down past Ron's Crooked Hell Tavern. The bus driver then turned around somewhere and drove past us. That is completely unsafe. I had a woman contact me today saying her son had a knife pulled on him on a van. She went to the police and made a statement because there was no guarantee that the other student who pulled that knife on her student, on her son, would be removed from the bus. My bus, I know that there's issues with CMD and bus drivers, but in the past four weeks, there have been seven different bus drivers between four different buses, Bus 28. And it was made clear tonight that you guys want to be the, one of the best school districts. Well, if our kids aren't safe on the bus, where are they going to be safe at? Because I have other parents telling me that when they go to CMD, CMD says it's the school's fault. When they go to the school, the school says when they're off these premises, it's CMD's. Well, obviously, there's conflict somewhere, and this needs to be addressed. I, I do have other parents' comments, I'm sure many of you read. There was a little girl who was sexually harassed on one of the buses, and the other student was not pulled off the buses. It was made aware that that student was moved to a different bus. That's unacceptable. That is completely unacceptable. I put my faith and trust in this school district to send my kids here. I have two boys who go to this school, and I am scared to death now to let them get on the bus and come to school. And that's not right. My, our taxes are one of the highest amounts in the state. And for me to be scared to death to send my kids to school is ridiculous. So I would be happy to sit down. I don't know what the agenda would be for that. This is my first school board meeting, so I don't know how this goes. I did email Mr. Nestor, and he did tell me that it was his impression that there was a bus driver that was going to be on Bus 28 for the mornings. After that, there was a different sub every morning. I know, my husband spoke with Brian yesterday after the bus driver let his kids off down the road, which by the way, the bus let them off, had the aide get out of the bus, walk around and walk up to the corner while stopping traffic while cars were going around and just turning on Santatoga Road while kids are trying to cross the street. That shouldn't have happened. They have a bus stop for a reason. This is 2017. That is, I mean, you guys know, that's a very unsafe, yeah, it was raining yesterday morning, so the roads were still slippery. And you're going to have kindergartners through fifth graders get off the bus and walk over a half a mile home? If this was your kids, I don't think you would want that either. Thank you.
So I know, I don't know what the protocol is about me responding to public comment or any of us actually responding to public comment, but I definitely feel that this warrants I've seen, I called attention to the Facebook strings and I went and I read them. Some, I'd say the main concern that arose for me, by the way, I agree, if any of those things happened, I have a second grader that rides and I have a middle schooler and a high schooler that ride too. So I would share all the same concerns. We've been blessed with a great bus driver for many years for my elementary school student. She does a great job. But these concerns are valid, and I saw a ton of comments about, we'll talk to CMD, we'll talk to Mr. Nestor. I think we need to let everybody know what, who to call. So for me, I would call building principal, and I have called building principals about issues on the bus, and they've straightened them out in a snap. And I'll say, even before I was on the school board, they got straightened out very quickly. That's where I would first think to go. But I think that there's a lot of misinformation floating around on social media. I don't even know where's the right place to go. I think these, these prob, these issues are happening. I mean, and it's not, you know, your one bus experience, there's been a few other bus experiences that I've heard about from parents or, or seen out there. So I think one of the concerns for me has been, and I hope we can do this, is to get information out to everybody to say this, this is how to get the problem or, or an issue or a concern addressed quickly. I'm sure, you know, from, from my experience, I know if I contact a building principal and they need to go higher, they will immediately take it as high as they need to go. They have the experience to know who they need to talk to to get things done. But I don't, I don't even know the best thing to do, and I have three kids that ride the bus every day. So I think it would be important for us. We do have issues to, to be addressed, and I know some, the issues that you mentioned today have been addressed. But what's the, what's the right way to get it done best and fastest? Sometimes I feel like I'll see comments about buses being late, and then I find out, well, yeah, the bus driver had to pull over to address behavior issues. But they're on the hot seat for being ten minutes late. And then, on the other hand, if they, if they just try to expedite the route and they don't deal with these issues, there's, you know, if there's kids standing up or all the way to, you know, the mistake that happened maybe because of rushing. Now we're talking safety and we're in an equally bad situation. So my, my question, I guess, that I pose is, not, not to you, but to, to us, what's the proper course of action when, when there's a concern to get these things communicated and addressed, communicated to the right people so that they can be addressed? I think that's something that, that's an issue that we need to, to take on and, and maybe pretty quickly. Because these things seem to be becoming more and more common and especially with elementary school and even middle school students, things can spiral out of control. If they feel a little bit of freedom, it could go pretty fast. So I guess that's my question. That's my response. I didn't want to just let you walk away and feel like, well, I said my piece, let's see what happens. I mean, we're, we're aware and sensitive to it, and I think there are some things that we could do. And that's just me. Anybody else wants to say something, please feel free.
I'd just like to add that, that, you know, given that we have the school district, we have multiple players involved with the buses, right? We have CMD, we have the principals, we have Mr. Nestor, and all play a part. And so, so I think that it would be useful to, for us internally to, to make clear where the, to your point, Matt, make clear what you do when a parent calls whomever they call, right? So I don't like hearing, oh, I called CMD and they said it's the school district, and I called the school district and they said it was CMD. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing the school district when I say that. I'm just saying that we need to be clear about who is responsible for what and make, and then communicate that back to the parents so that they feel as if somebody is taking responsibility for issues. Because there are always going to be issues. The question is, how do we handle them? And what do we do about them? If we have a driver shortage, well, that, that's a sticky situation, but we can also communicate that to our parents so that at least they understand that we're trying to address it or what we're trying to do to address it. And I, I would just like to see a little bit more proactivity along those lines rather than reactivity. So those, that's, that's my thoughts on this as well. And we all have kids, most of us here on this board have kids in this district that ride the buses. You know, we all want safety to be, we, we all agree that safety is a premier concern as it relates to the buses. And I apologize on behalf of the district for the issues that you faced over the last few days, and I'm certain we're going to address them appropriately.
Thank you. It wasn't over, this whole thing started on September 20th when there, an incident occurred between my, one of my sons and another boy. I called CMD around 4:30 on a Wednesday afternoon and told them what I heard from my two sons happened. And I asked to view the video. They told me I couldn't. I'm not sure who I spoke with. It was a woman. She said that somebody from the administration would view it. I called back Monday morning when I hadn't heard anything, and I spoke with Brian. He said he would go view the video. I called back two and a half hours later, and he still hadn't viewed it. It wasn't until I said that I have pictures of the bruises my son came home with on his shins that he went and would view it because I said I would involve the police if something wasn't done. And that's what started this thing, and then everything just kept escalating. And I understand there's problem, I don't want to say problem children, I understand there's issues with certain students, and if my kids are issues, I want to know about it. But I was told by the woman at CMD that the parents are not always notified when something happens on the bus. And that's the first problem. A parent should, a parent should always be notified if there's a problem on the bus. If my kid does something, if my kid kicks someone, I want to know. I want to be able to handle that at home as well as have, have that handled from CMD or the school.
Dave, I just have a question. When it comes to incidences like this, does CMD or your office have any like incident report as in to go through the checks and balances to make sure everything's been checked off?
What, what, each of the drivers are, are given the ability to produce referral slips. The bus drivers will not meet out any discipline for any infractions that take place on the bus, other than possibly moving the child to a, to a different seat or something like that. The, the referral slips are sent to the building principal or the assistant principal, depending on who handles the discipline in each given building. And, and they're the people who will determine if there's any, what, what the appropriate measures are for disciplining the student. But, you know, one, one of the challenges on a school bus is the driver's focus needs to be forward for the safety of all the children. So a lot of times, things can happen behind them that they're not aware of what happened because they can't take their eyes off the road. So I, I think, I think we've had some pretty good dialogue in the last couple, last week or so, back and forth, but tonight I heard some things that I hadn't heard before, not about your bus, but about some other things. And, you know, it's hard to address things if you're not aware of them. So I would encourage people to communicate, routine things should go to CMD, things that aren't answered promptly should come to me and/or the, the building principal to, to try and get the appropriate attention to, to those items. But the bus drivers would, would communicate things that they're aware of to the buildings.
Respectfully, Mr. Nestor, I, I think there might be a different way to go. At the end of the day, CMD is not responsible to the parents of this district. They're not, they're not accountable, they're not hired. They are hired by us, the district. So I don't think that their first course of action should be to CMD. I think the first course of act, in my opinion, if we were going to make a policy going forward, my opinion would be that the first person that parent should talk to would be the principal at their school, since that's the person with whom they should have the, some semblance of a personal relationship anyway, who might know your child personally and might be able to say, oh, I know what happened or whatever. That's, that's what I would think would make the most sense. That person knows who to call at CMD, that person knows who to call here at the district, Mr. Nestor, and, and to get the additional information so that they can be that face representing you and your child to the people that have to make the decision. So there's no who shot John, where you get the CMD saying it's the district's fault, the district's saying it's CMD's fault. You got the principal saying, I want to take care of this kid and answer this lady. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think, I think that would be my recommendation on how we do this. I, I, I don't want to get it further into it than that, but there needs to be a way of having a reporting so that a lot of these things aren't being done, either on, on a building level or a bus level. We need to get a, a sort of a uniform thing. For example, in our, in our packets, we get every month a number of, how many students are in what, in, in what grade and whether special or gifted or, or whatnot. So we have just an idea. It's just, it's a snapshot. It's not all the information, it's not how they're doing, it's not, you know, successes and failures, it's just a snapshot of numbers of things. I think we could do the same thing with incidents. Are the, are there incidents happening? Are they being resolved at the lowest level? You know, what, what had to be escalated? Very, very simple snapshot. I, I mean, it is not my job, it is not my intention to create a bunch of meaningless reports that you guys have to chase around data on. But something like this, we, we talk about safety, we talked about safety not with the children on the bus, but people not paying attention maybe to some of the stopping on the, you know, it's something we take very seriously. I think that's a way that we can do it. But for right now, what I, what I would like to see is if we have concurrence amongst the people on the board here, that the first person the parent should contact would be the principal of the, of the student.
I couldn't have said that better, Bob. You, you, you read my mind. I agree. And I would just say unless Dr. Shirk and Mr. Nestor, anybody want to, you know, make a, a good case to convince us otherwise, that's where I, that's exactly how I think it should be, but...
Well, I would agree too, but I just want to add that, that no matter what we say as to who should be the first person to be contacted, Mr. Nestor will still get calls. Dr. Shirk, you may get calls. I may get calls or emails, as well as the principals, as well as CMD. So everybody needs to be on the same page about what to say in, if they're the first person to get the call. And the only thing I would just say is what I don't like us doing is saying you need to call the principal, even though that is the right thing. So if somebody has gone to the trouble of calling me, then I don't say you need to call the principal. I get the information and, and I pass it on to the principal with the permission of the person who gave me the call. Now, we, this is, we could discuss this in more detail. I just point out that when you pass people around from place to place, sometimes they feel lost in the process. So I just want to add that caution and make sure we think that through as well. But for sure, everybody needs to know what they're supposed to say because they're all going to get the calls, no matter what we tell them to do. The principal's the person who's ultimately responsible for resolving the problem. That's what we're saying here, right?
No, the person is the advocate for the student. That, the, the person who's responsible for solving the problem is ultimately Dr. Shirk.
Well, okay, but, but ninety-nine percent of the time, the principal is looking...
The principal is looking out for the needs of the student and the safety of the student. Dr. Shirk is looking at the policy of CMD, the responsibility of whether or not they're meeting their contractual obligations, whether they're doing it in a timely fashion, and how the, how the issue ties into discipline. It's, it's a more encompassing thing than just taking care of this one issue. I want the principal focused on the student and focusing on solving that issue. So I, you're, you, I understand what you're saying. Not everybody's going to get the message. People are going to call who they call, and yes, we can establish what the parameters are and how that information gets relayed, but I, you know, again, I'm not going to get into moving school buses here. I've, I've given you basically my vision of what I think needs to be done, and I trust you to implement that vision.
The only thing I disagree with Mr. Rubinowitz on is if we're approached by a parent regarding a bus issue or any other issue. I think our stance, whether it be via Facebook or direct contact to us or to anybody really that's above the chain of command, is did you follow the chain of command? Go to your teacher, go to your principal. If you're not satisfied, go to the superintendent, not satisfied, then come to the board. So, and I agree with what, what Bob's saying in regards to the, and Matt in regards to the principal being the, the key person, right? I'm just concerned about the precedent we're setting here tonight because basically what we've done is heard from a parent who, if she followed the chain of command, this was the right... of command, this was the right place to come. But, we just overrode our administration with this issue. And that's a concern that I have. It should always go through, now, she already went through the principal, went through the superintendent, then come to the school board. But we shouldn't be hearing from, you know, because they knew to come to this meeting, well, let's override the superintendent. That's what we hired him to do. So, I, I don't disa, I don't disagree with the, the steps, you know, that you're suggesting, Bob. And, and perhaps that's what Bill's going to agree with. But it should always go through the, these type of things should go through the chain of command is, is... And just let me add one issue while I have a mic if I can. We need to, and I would request that we're, we don't do it here, but send back to the administration to get a clear protocol on communication in regards to bus issues. We, this was kind of touched on lightly, but this has been an issue in, in the recent past. When do parents get called? Well, just my opinion, right? If there's first responders involved, police, ambulance, fire, whatever, that should be a call. If it's more than whatever minutes late, they should get a call. You know, when else should they get a call? Because parents, sometimes they're getting calls for maybe minor things, and then they're not getting calls for other things. So, I would ask that the administration look at that piece as well, as far as when the, what do you call it, global messenger is used?
Hi. So, I had a far less... Jamie O'Keefe. Thank you, Mr. Nestor, for helping me out on this. There is no chain of command, right? So, I mean, that's your first problem, right? So, I had a challenge with, with my daughter's bus. It's still ongoing, but it seems to be under control. Far less issues. It was, it was consistently showing up late. You go to the PGSD website, it says call to CMD. That's all it says. Like, it took me two weeks of five parents to figure out that Mr. Nestor existed, right? And there were phone calls to principals, there were phone calls to CMD. I called CMD personally five times, right? All I wanted was, can we pick up my kids five minutes earlier? Because they're getting to school at 9:00 AM. There's no chain of command at all. So, I mean, that's the first thing that needs to be established and communicated. I honestly don't care what it is and who it needs to go to. I think giving it to the vendor is a bad idea, right? I'm in a service business. You would never put that, that process and that control on a vendor. But, you know, if that's what it is, find them, you know, build your controls in from there, or build an escalation process. But that's got to get communicated out, because it does go to Facebook, to find out what, who I, that's how I found out that, that Mr. Nestor existed. I was reading all the other posts, and it's like, oh, there's a guy that's in charge of transportation. Great, I'm going to send him an email. And he was immediately, got right back to me and, and responded again this morning, and, you know, hopefully things are going to get worked out in the next couple of days. But there's no, there's no plan for that right now, and there's no ability to understand who that is. And you do get it consistent. I got it for four days of, nope, not my problem, go call this person. And then that person says, go call somebody else, or basically just says, call CMD back again. So, I agree, once you decide what that chain of command is, you should enforce that. I understand the thought process of, hey, somebody shouldn't communicate again, but you're just going to continue the problem. So, you need to push it back down to it, and then follow up and make sure that it got done. But you got to...
I don't think you're going to get a resolution at this meeting. What we're asking the administration to do is go back and formulate that chain of command and that resolution, and then we'll communicate it back.
Well, well, let's make sure that we also get it on the website, whatever we decide, a very clear procedure, at the very least. So, so that if a person does the right thing and goes to the website, it doesn't just say, call CMD, as your, as your first response, when that isn't really what we want you to do.
Could we put out a district-wide communication pointing the parents in the right direction to, you know, if there is a bus issue, please, you know, call your principal, you know, and give them what right now could be the chain of command, because that's, that's what they're looking for right now. They want to walk away knowing that the next time there's an issue, they can call this number. And they will speak to someone who will then push it forward, and either try to resolve it, or send it on to the next step. So, I, I don't think they've gotten that answer yet.
I'm okay if it's, we're going to communicate that next week, once, once we figure it out. I just want to understand how that's going to be, right, at some relative time. I'm not advocating doing a snap decision right now on something like this.
Can, can I just say something? On our website, under the transportation tab, it has my picture and my phone number, and my email address. So, I don't know how, where, where you were going to look, but it, it's, it's there. I just double-checked to make sure that it was still there. So, you know, we, if we want to change that to contact your building principal with all issues, we can do that. But I think the building principal's probably more, more related to safety and discipline issues, whereas the routing issues are the things that I would typically deal with, with CMD.
Well, that may be a perfect thing to say, right?
Yeah.
When we figure this out.
Right.
And thank, thank you, Mr. Nestor. And I, I appreciate, I appreciate you coming in. And, you know, ultimately, you know, our, our children of our element, you are the advocate for your child. I get that. And they're going to come home to you, and they're going to tell you about their day and what happened. And, and that's where, you know, and, and, and just, you know, agreeing with Mr. Liguin, because the, the protocols that, 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 that we follow, and obviously, you're, it's not written down, okay, specifically. But, you know, some of our concerns, if, if I chronologically look at this thing, we had a two, two first weeks of school. That's usually a little chaotic, chaotic with schedules and so forth and so on. That, that's just standard operating procedure. We get into week three, we still had some more schedule issues. Week four, we have some schedule issues. We talked to CMD. They have some, obviously, some, some concerns about their, they don't have enough drivers. Their day of drivers in the pipeline. They're trying to get it done. And at the same time, I know Mr. Nestor and CMD is trying to do reroutes to, to, to try to squeeze routes down and get people where they need, need to be. I, I know that is a fact. And I know Mr. Nestor has addressed every, every logistical standpoint of that. And I know our building principals address all the discipline pieces as well. So, what I'm hearing tonight from the board and from the community is, we just need to do a better job with that, okay? Our principals do react to those things at a building level. I, they, they, we, I want, you need to tell them. And you need to make sure that they follow through. And if they don't, then we have Dr. Harney to go to next, and then finally here. And then, you know, my hope is that this thing gets nailed, nailed down at the building level. So, yes, I am concerned about it. And I know CMD is concerned about it, because we, we contact them every day. So, we, we will put some clear, clear focus items on the website. We can send a global connect out, where we can have these procedures in place. The logistical piece, the, the route piece, I know Mr. Nestor will handle. The discipline on a daily basis. And one of the things I know for sure is, I've talked to my, my three, five principals and my middle school principal, is that we have handled more bus referrals in the month of September than, than ever before. Because we've made an area of focus with our, 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 our building principals of making sure we follow through regarding our discipline and attendance. And riding a bus is a privilege, okay? And, and there are certain parameters, unfortunately for us, we have to follow when it comes to smaller children, you know, and we have to try to educate those kids to do better. And then there's other sometimes limitations where we have to work within constraints, you know, of an IEP. So, we're aware of all that. I hear you loud and clear. Like I said, I hear the board. I hear the community. We'll do, we'll continue to work on this and get better. And it's not because no one cares and no one's turning. I, I understand that what my lower Pots Grove staff is doing with Mrs. Williams and Mr. Siler, I know Mr. Boyer, Mr. Becker are handling this, like, on, on lickety-split, because that was a focus for us as a school district. That was an area of concern coming out of last year, and we didn't, we wanted to make sure we got out of the gate. Some of the CMD issues, I, we, we just, some of that, we just could not control. But they are working on that. And we obviously are going to ask them to, to make sure that they continue to do their, their part, so that these issues, you know, get resolved, the five, 10 minutes here, whether it's before school or after school. So, we'll, we'll get that out sooner than later. And, and I, and I always say this, and I said this to everybody, some people here, because I've been in their classrooms and I've been into buildings. We are a small enough intimate district. Call me. Okay? I mean, I just, it's, we, we don't have 10,000, 12,000 kids. We don't have over 1,000 employees, okay? People do call me. People do stop by my office. And obviously, when it gets to a certain point, then you need to do that. I can't do district business on Facebook. I can't, because we have to be thoughtful in the way we do things. I can't, I can't react in, in seconds and minutes. You know, I, I need to make sure that we process and make the right decisions for our children. So, don't, you know, forgive me for that, I guess. But I, we are intimate and small enough that we can help you out in a short term, because it can flow. Instead of going this way, it goes that way. And sometimes going that way is a lot quicker than going this way. So, I, I, I give that as a final option. But we do have administrators and, and, and our business manager, our transportation, who are capable of getting the job done. And I only ask that if it's not getting done, then you just call me immediately, and we'll, we'll cut out all the middle people. That's, you know, we can do that. Okay? So, I appreciate your insight, and thanks for coming.
I have a question, Mr. Nestor. We recently re-approved a contract with CMD. Does, is it standard, or is it in the contract anywhere about regulations or guidelines as far as that they will always have a certain number of drivers on staff, or performance of the drivers? Because one thing I was going to bring to you after the meeting, but I'll just mention now, is coming home from work the other night, practice bus went by me, and they were turning through an intersection, and I looked up, and I saw, oh, Pots Grove, it's one of ours. And there was a student standing right behind the bus driver, talking to the bus driver. So, obviously, that driver was okay with that. So, I just wondering, I mean, do we have any recourse with CMD for whenever their drivers are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, keeping their children safe?
If we become aware of a, of a situation, I had that conversation with Brian or his superior, if it, if it's not taken care of, at CMD. To date, we've had very good response when we, when we bring issues to them. As far as the number of mandated drivers, there, I don't believe there is anything that's specified in the contract. They know how many drivers they need. We had an unexpected turnover at, right at the beginning of the school year this year, that unfortunately, it impacted, you know, we lost, I think they lost five drivers. We have about 40 vehicles on the road every day, so that's about 12% of our staff left in the first couple of weeks of school. So, and, and unfortunately, it takes, it takes a while for them to onboard new drivers, to get all the clearances and things like that. So, I know they've been in that process. They have some people in the pipeline that are coming on, which will hopefully relieve this, this pressure that we have on our, on our, on our routes, which require sub-drivers on, on some of the runs on a day-to-day basis. We can certainly look at putting something quoted in, in a future contract, but I don't think it's there. But we've been, we've had very good response from CMD when we, when we bring an issue that we have found with a driver to their attention. Or if they've, you know, a lot of times, they find, they find the issue and they address it, you know, in advance. It's not just us bringing it to them.
To piggyback off the discussion from tonight from Mr. Liguin, obviously, Mr. Lappick and such like that, other companies, that again, would have more issues with me, or more determination, rather than just dollars. So, I would ask that also to be taken into factor over the course of the year.
I don't think that we asked the administration to evaluate CMD. I think we asked the administration to evaluate whether or not we want to continue with the model in which we don't, in which we own the buses, and the bus company doesn't own the buses. I believe that was the subject of our discussion at the last board meeting. Does anybody recollect that?
That's going to include evaluating CMD in general.
I, I want to be clear about what our direction was. Our direction was to evaluate whether or not, the question of ownership of the buses, not evaluation of our vendor.
I thought our, my directive was to find out whether it was a fiscally sound practice...
Correct.
...that we're, we're involved in. The, the items that you're talking about, Mr. Leach, may bring some degree of subjectivity into the, into discussion. Maybe, maybe I can get the data, maybe I can't. I don't know. I don't know how much of that type of data I can get.
Let me just say, as to my knowledge, you're the only district, and it's been this way for, I won't tell you how long, that has this model, so it's going to be very hard to compare, meaning the model, we own the buses, and somebody operates them. You're the only ones that I'm aware of anywhere in the state, but certainly this part of the state, that has that model. So, I just caution you. And the other thing I'll tell you that, and this is not a legal opinion or legal advice, just from tending other board meetings, and based on discussion with some of my colleagues who also represent Pablo's school districts, unfortunately, the issue of drivers is not at all unique to this district. And I know a district that's not too far away, that's talking about defaulting their operator, not because they, they don't have the right number of drivers, but because they're not providing the service. That's really the bottom line. The problem is, there's nobody else that can pick the service up, you know, who can start to provide 40 and 50 bus drivers or buses. So, I only give you that, not as a legal opinion, only to the fact that the issue is unfortunately, become fairly significant all over southeast Pennsylvania, as I understand it. I, I don't know there's any consolation in misery loves company, but you do have company.
So, for purposes of clarification, for the news story that I somehow suspect will appear tomorrow, are we asking people to call the principals?
Joe, we always have. That's always, that, that's always been, yeah, yeah, that's always been, as long as I've been in this business, we've, we've done, we've, we've asked that. Now, if, and again, this is, this has cropped up. So, you know, we didn't hear about this for four years prior to these concerns, so to speak, this specific that we inhale. So, so we're going to, we're going to go back out, and, you know, we have administrative meetings tomorrow. We're going to just up that protocol and have an understanding that logistically, you know, we want the logistic calls to go to Mr. Nestor, and we want the building-specific things, discipline and safety. We want that reported, you know, to, to our building principals, you know, for, for our parents. You know, a lot of times, in middle school and high school, there's self-advocacy. They'll print, they'll, they'll tell counselors and building principals that things. But obviously, in our elementary divisions, you know, we would expect the parents would be self-advocates for their kids and get that information, you know, to the, to the principals. So, that's just some, that's going to be like a refocus, if you will, a re-point of emphasis, so that our, our community and our families know who they need to contact. And then, then we go to CMD for bus tapes or logistical is, things, and they help us in, in, in that particular end as well. Yeah, you bet.
Okay. I have John Rossi.
It's getting late. I'll make this short. I'll speak louder. Make this short, blunt, to the point. First of all, I ask the board, we have, we've been talking about protocols and procedures most of the night, correct? Do we have a protocol and procedure on public comment, Mr. President? Do we? Yes or no?
I'm like, hold on.
I'm a little annoyed. If you all just set a precedent tonight, do you let a gentleman with a concern from out of the audience and stand behind somebody who was thinking about a subject, a public comment, out of turn, and you guys just let him come up? I'm not against the person who did it. That shouldn't happen. You have other people who have public comments. You just set a precedent. Anybody can step up, stand behind this lady who's talking about her concern, and this gentleman come up, stood up, grabbed the mic, and started talking about, raising his hand, started talking about his concern. It's not how it works. Wait for me.
Well, we also have a policy that you're not allowed to direct questions to particular members of the board, but I'm letting you do that now, Mr. Rossi.
Okay, as a board, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
We try to be considerate to our audience. We do have policies. We do have protocols and procedures. But we try to be considerate to our audience and our constituents.
Now, the second question. The reason I didn't come here tonight is about the bus issue. Mr. Nestor, you stated that the bus line, the transport, you can hand out, this is going to be a thorough, whatever you call it, they send off today. My daughter spends the afternoon, after school, she goes back to Texas, and she gets tutored. She's not the greatest student in the world, because she's trying real hard. Her friend is getting tutored after school, and apparently, they have to get a, a pass from either the tutor or the school to get on that, I guess, activity bus. And that, that bus takes them from high school, I guess, to the middle school. the high school, I guess, to the middle school, they switch buses, and they come home, or they stay on the bus to pick up more kids. I'm not sure how that works. She got, they went to get on the bus at the high school. They both had a pass. This is bus seven, just so you know. Both had a pass. The other girl's running through her purse, her satchel, whatever you want to call it, they can't find her pass. My daughter drops hers. She goes to pick it over, pick it up. The other girl goes to help her. He automatically accuses them of only having one pass, and they were trying to switch it off. And he screamed at them both and told them to get off the bus. He wasn't taking. Well, stick up for my daughter. The most of them did not, both did not get off the bus, because they had to get home. They rode in the bus to the next, wherever the transfer went, however they do it, I don't know what they do. But she was very upset, very upset that she got yelled at and screamed at by the bus driver, and they were told to get off the bus. Now, I don't, he said he was going to light up something, tell them whatever. Haven't heard anything about it. But I don't know if that can be followed up on. Find out. But, you know, real quickly, our bus drivers are there, I think he said, they look, he said they drive, they look forward, they're driving, that's their job, and they have a heck of a responsibility. I'm not diminishing that by any means, but their biggest responsibility is our children. And I don't think our children should be afraid or nervous about the bus driver. Been in this district since 2000. For the longest time I was spoiled, we had a great bus driver down on Foxtail Drive, and never really had too much of an issue. They'd have the issue here and there about, "Well, it's not our problem, you call that." Those buses say Pots Grove, like Mr. Lincoln said, "We're ultimately responsible." Because that bus says Pots Grove School District. I bet you a third of the people in this district don't know, do not know that we don't own and operate our own buses. The bus that says Pots Grove on the side.
So, we-
Huh? I mean, we don't operate, I'm sorry, we don't operate the buses. And that was a big concern. And when she told me that, she's in 12th grade, and she got screaming at by the bus driver. Do we have cameras in all our buses or not? They're big buses. So, we should be able to look, pack up things. Are we allowed to request that as a parent or not?
If there is an issue of concern on the bus, you can contact me, and I can get the tape pulled, or you can contact CMD and have the tape pulled. We don't allow parents to view the tapes because there's other students on the bus.
Absolutely correct. I agree with that 100%. My last question, I'll make it real quick. Couple of issues, and I love it when the board doesn't vote straight, nine to nothing, everything passed, happy. I like it when people have their opinions and their, and their no's and their yeses. And most of the time, Bill explained why he voted no. Are we allowed to ask on certain issues why certain, why votes were no, or is that a no? There was a vote tonight on supporting a group, a student, and I'd like to know why those people said no.
I'd say you're allowed to ask. I don't think anybody's, nobody's obligated to answer you, but you're always allowed to ask.
I'd just like to know why there was no votes on supporting a student group, that's all. If they want to put it out there, fine, I guess. Do any of the no voters want to put out why they voted no? I'd appreciate it.
Asked your question, John. Let me just reiterate at the risk of being hooted down and booed by the audience, that this is a time of public comment. As Mr. Alexander pointed out, we're exempt comment. It's not necessarily meant for the board to be cross-examined. So, I'm going to ask that, if I have those questions, you address that to the people personally.
I get it.
That's all I have for public comment. I always check one time. Is, does anybody have public comment that did not fill out a form? All right, with that then, we will adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight.